All right, we have roll call. Jim Baines is going to be tardy. Lucas is...
I've not heard from Lucas. The only one I know is not going to be here is Joe Hickory.
Lucas is the senior banquet.
Oh.
That's tonight.
Great. That's an excuse.
Please tell us.
Great. We all received a copy of the minutes from our meeting that we had on May 1st, as well as our special meeting on May 15th. Would we...do we have any amendments? I'd like to move these forward as a slate if you are agreeable.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll do it separate. Anything for that. Any amendments we need to make for the May 1st meeting? If none, can I have a motion please?
Second.
Great, all those in favor? And abstained? Great. Any amendments we need to make for the May 15th meeting? Can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, thank you. We do have a couple of adjustments to the agenda that are in your packet. We have an addition under 6A, as well as 6B. So you can refer to the folder when we get to that section in the agenda. At this point, I'd like to invite those in the community who would like to address the board. Just a reminder that we do have a policy in place. We ask that the dialogue remain respectful, that we're not speaking about specific personnel. And with that said, I'd like to invite Leah up. If you could introduce yourself, Leah. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Leah Kraski. And I'm here on Monday to ask that you relate to my experience at Wagner and Medical and in executive session, because I can't say them in public because of the guidelines. I followed your current policy in order to address such things in here. You can continue to ignore the issues that I would like to bring up to you by closing your ears and by changing policies that would allow them to be addressed. But meanwhile, laws are broken every day at Wagner, and children are being hurt. So, please, let me talk to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Is there anyone else in the community that would like to address the board this evening? For board chair report, we do have a...we have a scheduled meeting in July 3rd. Typically, we move that meeting to a little bit later in July, so that we are not coincidental with the holiday. Rick is proposing July 10th as an option, so I wanted to throw that out there to the board and see if you are all agreeable in shifting our July meeting to July 10th. Same time, same place.
We could shift it to August.
We could. There'll be lots of work to be discussed, I'm sure, in July, in anticipation of the school year. Are we good with that?
We will also need a one-item meeting in July, correct? For that review.
Yes.
For superintendent review.
Yes, we will establish that.
At the July meeting.
We can discuss that maybe at the end of the meeting tonight, when we're setting meeting dates.
Yes.
Or in when we're talking about superintendent ballot. Great. Personnel.
Other personnel, we have some resignations to be performed publicly tonight. The first one, your adjustment to the agenda, Elizabeth Walls, grade 3 teacher at Smith. If you reference my agenda notes sent out on Friday, we have the resignation of Carol Moore's, Spanish teacher, McGraw School, Andre Leland, Weatherby School, Danielle Farrell, Jesse Gower, and Vicki Cousineau, we're going to recognize in a moment, and Angelie Perrow, we're also going to recognize in a moment. So those are resignations. Before I get to nominations, if you look at my agenda notes, just to announce for the benefit of the public, we have some transfers. Julie LaBreck from grade 2 to grade 3 at Smith. Brooke Bartlett from Point 6 FTE District Occupational Therapist to full-time, and Kimberly McPherson from full-time to Point 6. Brooke Malange from grade 2 to grade 1 at McGraw, and Rob McDonough from grade 4 to grade 3 teacher at Wethley. Now, if you go back to the agenda notes, we do have two nominations this evening. First one's at Reesbrook Middle School in area mathematics, Joshua Jenks. So Joshua has a master's in teaching, also a bachelor's in psychology, has been employed in our district as educational technician, came to us from the state of Florida. With his experience, Joshua's salary per the collective bargaining contract is $40,000.407, so I ask for your endorsement for Joshua Jenks, math teacher at Reesbrook Middle School.
Second. All those in favor?
Okay, Josh, welcome. Congratulations, Josh. I have Cameron Blood, English Social Studies teacher at Hampton Academy. Cameron's coming to us from his current position next door in Searsport. You can see he also has a BS in secondary education in the University of Maine. Cameron's salary per the prescribed contract is $36,375. So I recommend Cameron Blood, English Social Studies teacher here at Hampton Academy.
Second. Any questions? Great, all those in favor?
Cameron, congratulations. Welcome to our district. Okay, now we get on to the superintendent's report. Reading and essential behaviors, no consproclamation this evening is John.
Education enables all students to learn new skills, acquire new knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for when you reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of the changes of society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share responsibility to educate our children and themselves, our schools, our community, support systems, and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate. And our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
John? Now, we're going to recognize some of the people that have dedicated years to our district who are retiring. And I told one of the ladies tonight, when you stay in our district 20 years, you get a clock. If you stay 19, you get a certificate. I don't think I've seen you, Terry. Terry Dean's been with us seven years. She's been at Hampton Academy, so she'll receive a certificate signed by Karen herself. Here's the lady I mentioned, the 20 years, Vicki Cousineau. Vicki, you've been...Vicki's been with us 19 years. I didn't get my notes. Vicki's been with 19 years. Also taught in Massachusetts for the school for...public school for the blind, Parker School for the Blind, sorry. Then you moved to Maine, and you actually taught in Corinth. Then you went to Smith School, and then you served 19 years in RSU 22. So congratulations, Vicki, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything, Vicki?
Oh, yes. Thank you for everything. I've enjoyed working in the district, and I just want to say that I have had the opportunity to work in all of the schools in Hampton and Winterford as part of my unique situation. And this district has some wonderful, great teachers, staff, ed techs, and they work really hard, and they go above and beyond. And I have seen it in all of the schools, and I just think it's important that...I've had the opportunity to work with these people, and they've worked well, you know, we've worked well together, but I just think it's important that you all know that. And because of my situation, I wanted to say that. Thank you.
Another young lady with 19 years, Valerie Murray. Valerie has had 19 years in our district. She also was an ed tech for five years, is that correct, in the Learning Center? Also was an ed tech in auto. So Valerie, on behalf of the board, direct us, thank you for your dedicated 19 years to RSU 22.
Thank you very much. It's been a real pleasure to have the opportunity to have...been able to teach here, to have the second love. My first love was to be able to stay home and raise four kids after a student taught at the old Hampton Academy in my third year of college, which is really kind of ironic. But then to end up teaching here in what I went to school with, it's been a huge, huge honor, and I've really enjoyed it. I am looking forward to some new beginnings. So thank you very much for being a student.
This is a note. Valerie's husband, as a retired superintendent, was in Old Town for a number of years, Owen Murray. So Owen and I served a number of years together. Now, we have three people that are going to receive a clock that when you put the battery in it, it will work. Angelie Perrow. Angelie. Now, Angelie, let me see. Okay, Angelie's been 20 years in our district. You were 19 years as a reading assistant, also Chapter 1, and you also at the Herman Elementary School, is that right? Did I get that correct?
No.
No? What did I miss?
One year as a reading assistant.
One year? Okay, there you go.
Yep.
And then the 20 years in the area of art. And you were at Herman, correct?
I was in Herman, but were a grade teacher.
So Angelie, thank you for your 20 years for our district and teaching the children and your dedication to our RSU 22 children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments, Angelie?
I just want to say, working at Weatherby for the last 19 years, teaching art has been a wonderful job. It's been great to inspire kids to do art, and they've loved it, and I've loved it, so it's been great for all of us. And great team of teachers, just like Vicki said, couldn't be a better place to teach. So thank you all for supporting our kids, supporting our teachers, and making it a great district to be in. Thanks.
I just have a comment about Angelie, because a comment came up today. You may not know this, but around the district, especially in front of the central office and around Weatherby School, Angelie has planted flowers for probably 20 years or close to. And so we'll certainly miss that, because the comment was made today that you were retiring, and we knew that that might disappear. But if you need something in retirement, we'd love to see you around, so thank you for that.
When I walked back today from the bank, I did notice that the soil was moving around a little bit, and there was a rock sitting here. No flower, but a rock, yeah. Candy Pendley. Candace has been with us for 30 years. Candace served as an ed tech in Remito Rini at McGraw. She taught grades 2, 3, 5 at Weatherby for 20 years while she received her master's in literacy. She completed career work in special education at Weatherby and Wagner, and she's served on many districts in her 30-year tenure to our district. So Candace, thank you very much for 30 years. We appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Any comments, Candace?
I just want to say thank you, and it's been a pleasure to work in the district with all of the wonderful staff and community and the students that I've had the opportunity to touch over the years and hopefully inspire in some way. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Georgiana Peet. Okay, so Georgiana's been with us for 22 years. Five years as educational technician. She's been involved in cross-country for eight years. Coached the Exploring Engineering Club for seven years. She coordinated the Drama Club Cafe.
Yes.
And also you worked at University of Maine Engineering Department, Department of Geology and so on.
With Lester.
Right? With Lester. So Georgiana, thank you for your 22 years and dedication to our children. She's 22.
Thank you.
How much you have, Georgiana?
I do.
Okay.
So what I'd like to tell you is, I'd like to tell you how much it...how important was to me, how much enjoyment and fulfillment I got from teaching the students in this district. I teach them about rocks, and I teach them about the stars. And when they go, "Whoa, Mrs. Peet, I got it, I got it," or when they go, "You know, you're right, Mrs. Peet, rocks are cool," it validates, validates as a person and as a teacher. I want to thank the parents who share their kids with me. I want to make sure I mention the support from the staff and the administration who always made me go above and beyond. And then I want to thank the district for the education you gave my children, the foundation that you laid for them to build them into the successful people that they are today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And following up with Lucas, as this will be his last meeting. If the board members are not aware, we also, on behalf of the board, give Lucas a $400 scholarship that will be payable to him when he starts the second semester at the post-secondary school of his choice. So I'll pass this on to Lucas, also reminding him there's a $400 check in the mail. I think he's going to Boston College. We have had no requests from our law enforcement personnel related to the questions we are answering marginally. Oh, actually, I made a mistake, I'm sorry. I need to go back to nominations. I follow my script here. Mr. Lauer, I'm surprised you didn't bring me back to task. So if you reference your agenda notes, we do have the nomination for coaching positions I have for Mr. Lauer. Also, you can see there's two pages to that, and also the coaching nomination for Reesbrook Middle School and Samuel Wagner Middle School. Normally, we endorse these as a slate, so that's why I'll advance at this time for your endorsement as well. Any questions?
Do we have a motion to advance this as a slate? We're about to say...second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll go back down to the superintendent's report. Fundraising report. Per board policy, we distribute this on a quarterly basis. You can see that our schools have raised, just to tell you, $18,000, and those activities, you can see, are prescribed and outlined here. Any questions on that spreadsheet for you? A lot of activity going on in our schools, you can see. Okay? Next one is Hampton Academy graduation. Chair Hawks and I will not be there Sunday, but Mr. Miller will, and Mrs. Nichols will. As I indicated to the board that I'm flying to North Carolina on Friday to attend the marriage of my godchild and niece. And that's where I'll be, so I know Heath and Reagan will be able to hold that down very well.
If you're able to go, I would really encourage you to. It's a very fulfilling experience.
I'll be there for sure. You've got someone graduating with us. It's a great event. I mean, as I've mentioned to John, this is my 29th year, so I've done 28 of them, but the performance at Hampton Academy is very special in many ways, but you're in and out in an hour and 45 minutes. It's down, very much recognized, it flows very nicely. We typically have around 1,500, 1,600 people here, we take one or two, so it's a large congregation. As an aside, I was talking to the superintendent of schools in Herman today, and they have their graduation at Herman at the Cross Center, at the expense of $12,000, by the way. So, but he was asking me how we did it, and we also...correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Tracy, we also stream it to the performing arts center, do we not?
We have in the past. I have the past on the docket to do this year, but yeah, we have.
Way back, I'm looking around the table, there's no one who's here then, way back we had outside on the football field, until it became problematic, because we didn't know if it was going to rain or not, so we decided to bring it back into the gymnasium. Of course, that's one we need to do as well, so that is Sunday. Okay, then, district budget meeting. We'll all be together tomorrow night downstairs at 7:00, and the district budget meeting is very much similar to a town meeting, if you've never been to one before. We have the articles that have been now submitted through the link 22. We had a meeting last night. We had four people in the audience. We had a two-hour presentation with the budget, and I'm very optimistic that tomorrow night's district budget meeting will be fine. And then, as we all know, that then will be looked to be validated on Tuesday. As you also know, we posed the question on Tuesday whether we want to continue for the next three years on the budget referendum validation approach, that we are prescribed by law to do so, voting by the citizenry. So that's where we are. So tomorrow night, district budget meeting, Tuesday referendum validation. Any questions on that?
Will we be doing the alert again this year? Text alert?
Yes, we will.
The other thing, just in case board members are wondering, typically in a district budget meeting, the questions usually are answered by Reagan and myself, maybe the chair, or maybe Rob, the chair of the budget meeting. Don't be unnerved that you need to speak. You certainly have the right to speak, but you don't have any obligation, if you will, to address the people in the audience. And we have one article that was a written ballot. Other than that, the articles will be voted by a show of hands, and that is all facilitated by a moderator. And just being transparent with you tonight, I have spoken to Mr. Peet. He's interested in getting a moderator tomorrow night, if indeed he's elected. So that's how it plays itself on. Okay? Any questions for that? All right? Sarah?
I wanted to use this opportunity to mention something that's been a concern by a lot of students, and they've talked to me about this. And I was wondering if it could be investigated further in one of the committees. A lot of schools do scaling of AP classes. For example, Brewer and Skowhegan, I think Bangor does something with the grades, and whether that be something that goes on to the grade of your AP class, if you're challenging yourself and going out there to take more rigorous courses, should that be reflected in your overall GPA, making it lower? And this often is a concern when it comes to, like, class rankings and those who have very high GPAs and are at the top of the class but take very lesser challenging courses. I know that Brewer, when you take an AP class, they add a percentage, a few points, not a few points, but like a decimal point on to your GPA. And we don't do that here at Hampton Academy, but I was wondering if that could be looked into for maybe future years, because I find that to be a big concern by a lot of students.
Thank you, Sarah. We'll take that to the education committee.
Anything else, Sarah?
Um, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Reagan?
Okay, it's the monthly financial report.
Okay, this is our monthly financial statement. This will be the last financial statement that the full board sees for the fiscal year that will conclude on June 30th. So I want to bring context to this and give you some information as to how we'll round out the year. First of all, I'd like you to know that 7% of the fiscal year remains at this point, and 4% of the staff and student year remains. We do still have two payrolls that will come out through June 30th in this month. So as we're looking here, I'd like you to know, too, that facilities projects are not concluded this year. We will go right through June 30th utilizing this budget, so between June 17th and the 30th, we have a couple of weeks where we will be getting some things done. But you can see here that we're going to be ending the fiscal year with carry forward. We do expect that some of the categories that we'll be analyzing relate to how we have spent money on particular staff positions. I'd like to bring your attention to Article 2, for instance. We did have a situation or two where we had ed techs that we either couldn't fulfill because we were trying to find applicants for them, or we had students that might have moved out of the district at a certain time and didn't require that one-on-one any longer. So we'll make sure we're going through all of that, taking a look. We also would bring to your attention that Article 9, facilities management, we do have those projects that will still be continuing. And we'll also be looking at, because of our carry forward, are we able to fund some of the projects this year that we had thought maybe we'd have to dedicate toward capital reserve? So we'll be making those decisions along the way. But for the most part, I feel that we're going to be ending strong, and we can make decisions about our carry forward once we have the final numbers, probably into the end of August and September, because invoices will come through the end of August. Are there any particular questions related to any of the categories? As Superintendent Lyons spoke to, we do have the district budget meeting tomorrow. Here's Jim, so we'll see you there. We do have a technology lease board resolution this evening. We are moving forward with a significant technology lease. We will be refreshing students' computers here at the high school and also for 6th grade. That will allow us to do buyback on our devices that are still operational here at Hampton Academy. We have come to the end of the shelf life for sure. Toward the end of this quarter, we've had a number of orders we've had to place to get students through the end of their year, so it's the time. So you'll be hearing that resolution and can make a decision on your degree of support. School supplies provided for students is something I wanted to come back around to. We started our year talking about this, and you had a very strong interest in the school district being supportive of student supplies. We have had a good discussion about this, and I'd like to let you know that K-5 schools will be sending home a letter this year that will be similar at each of the schools, and it will indicate that the school district will be providing necessary supplies for students. We are going to write in a letter that if parents wish to donate and they have an interest in buying their own child supplies, because they just simply enjoy that rite of passage, we're making recommendations of what they purchase, so the children feel like they have the right supply in the right place, because the teachers often have particulars they want for the developmental level of the children. So I thank the principals for their coming together around that, and I think we'll do very well by the children and the families. There will be a couple of items that we will continue to ask for. We will be asking that the parents provide a backpack or let us know they're interested in a backpack, because we get backpack donations. And also, at the middle school level, there will be a request around binders, because the middle school level just has that time where it's best if they can zip things in. And if there's a need for a binder to be provided at the middle school level, we will also make provision for that. But many students like to pick their own, because they have their own style of organization. As far as the main purchase at a high school level, that tends to be calculators for students in particular math classes, and the high school does make provision for students who require the calculator and need to have one purchased. Otherwise, once again, kids are making their own choices based on the teacher recommendations, and we're going to let that carry forward, depending on how families feel. Principals, anything you'd like to add to that? All right, so thank you for the discussion and bringing this forth, and we hope it supports our community well. Moving on to building improvements and issues, today we did have an incident where Reesbrook Middle School had a strange, pretty potent odor, and so we immediately took action to detect if that was indeed propane, because we have put propane in at Reesbrook. We called public safety right to the site, and they came and did meter readings. They found none. We continued to have Dead River make all of the necessary inspections and do leak detection as well. They stayed for such a long time compared to what they usually do for leak control, and I appreciate that. We actually had public safety come back, because we wanted to do a second check and verify all was well. And an interesting thing occurred that I'd like you to know. I received around 11:30 a call from the DEP, and the DEP had received a reach out from one of our own families, because they had received the communication that went out, and they offered to come and check as well, because they have different meters, apparently, than public safety. So said, "Sure, come on," and they came as well, and no detection. So we did clean the...have honey... So we did clean the, have Honeywell and Dead River come back after school and I haven't gotten the final report yet, so I'll let you know if there's anything you need to know around that. Reedsbrook Athletic Booster Snack Shack is slated to arrive tomorrow morning at nine, so that will be an interesting drop off and see how that goes. And we thank the athletic boosters for the support of that building. That should be a great addition. We have been slated for an integrated pest management inspection and that was supposed to happen today at nine, but I was called this morning and it's going to be moved to the 24th of June, so we're prepared for that. And then we had an MSMA risk management evaluation, so we were inspected from head to toe around how we're compliant with OSHA-level procedure, documentation, training. And we have had a few areas where we've been asked to just make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. So we're doing that over the summer and having a training on one of the in-service days to cover some of the areas that we need to meet though. School nutrition, I'd like to thank all of our school nutrition staff because the field day barbecues have begun. So throughout the district, they are just so much fun to attend. You couldn't ask for more happy kids to sit on the grass and eat corn on the cob and get ice cream for dessert. So it's been a really fun start to the June send-off for the kids. And then I'd like to thank school nutrition because they will be catering our diversity forum and it's great when we have our own programs willing to step up to that degree and we're really looking forward to it. So thank you Cathy for that and for your staff helping out. Transportation, we have purchased a used van out of this year's budget, which we had planned to do, but I do want you to know that our van fleet's being watched really carefully and we're going to keep this renewal going. We do have the diversity forum coming up on June 12th and that will be held at Reedsbrook, but it is open to all district community members and we hope that people come out. We're going to have entertainment, music playing, we're going to have appetizers upon arrival, a full dinner for those who attend and wonderful table discussions. So we're looking forward to a high degree of participation. And we've had so many staff members and board members who have been interested in attending and folks who are willing to facilitate. I'd like to tell you that this year I was able to visit both the town of Hampden and the town of Frankfort Selectmen or Town Council Budget Meetings. And I think that was an effort that was very well received and it was great dialogue, more conversational than our presentations generally are. And I'd like to thank both towns for welcoming me to their meetings and I know those relationships will continue. I did reach out to Newburgh and Winterport. Winterport simply wanted me to come on the night of the public forum, so they understood that I couldn't do that. And then Newburgh said that they felt this year they were all set, but certainly next year we'll probably have an invitation. So I thank all the towns. And then I'd like to invite you to consider going to Professional Development Opportunity School Boards in Crisis Workshop. The name is a little unfortunate. It's not we're in crisis, but I think there are crises that we need to be well-versed in attending and if you'd like to attend, I will be. And I'd love to have somebody go with me, if not a group. So it's in Auburn, so it will be an early morning trek down.
We have two ladies right over here that have signed up, Jane and Mary.
Okay, great. Okay, good.
Is that it, Regan?
That's it.
Thank you, Karen.
Open it up for questions of board members. Have any questions this evening? Mary Ann?
I do. I want to revisit what you said about the binders because I know that was one of the major concerns that Jane has about the cost of those. So I'm just wondering if we can make an arrangement with the retail business for a discount that we could let people know about? Or can we provide a coupon from donations for students who it may be able to assist them in purchasing? I think I remember them being thirty-dollar binders. So if we can look at some ways to offset the cost for some of our, and still give the children the opportunity to feel like they have something that's comparable to their more well-endowed peers, that would be great.
Absolutely. You know, the other thing we can do, Mary Ann, is we have so many folks who are offering either groups or individuals to supply things. And I think if we're very specific about what it is we'd like supplied, that will happen. So we'll be sure to get that word out and I like your ideas as well, so we'll look into that. Okay.
I do have a request. I don't feel like we're using our school board Facebook page as much as we probably could. Am I correct that we have a school board Facebook page?
Yes, and we, that is because Scott Cuddy was primary and he's, he...
Right.
So I think that that might be a good topic to take to the Community Relations Group and how we revamp that.
Okay, so I would just like to request, because I have had feedback that people have to, they have to struggle to find out when some of our committee meetings are, whether we can get the calendar posted and pinned to the top because you can pin to the top the calendar for a given month. So that people can just go to that page, see when the Education Committee, see when the Policy Committee Behavioral Review is meeting.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
Along this?
Yeah, and Nate, you can help me. We actually in this budget are supporting a new app. And that new app is going to coalesce all of our platforms so that we're feeding information once and it will deploy to all of those platforms. So I think that this will be happening so that, starting with the new school year, we would be active with that.
Totally right. Not for, we're early on. Will that include board? My concern is people who are interested in what the board is doing and will that include the board calendar?
That's our intent, yes. Those events should be populating. But is there anything you'd like to add or curb my enthusiasm?
I just started posting a few things today to the district Facebook page and certainly feel the loss of Scott because he was doing a great job with that.
Right.
If you are excited about that and want to work with me or needs some training, I'll work with you too. Regan, how I guess?
Nate, I'll probably be in touch with you too because part of that is I dropped the ball. I just did not have any idea how much Scott put into it because we really didn't interact much by funding design. So as the chair of the committee, I've got to get up to speed on that.
And I would just like to thank Mrs. Campbell at the Wagner School for the work that their civil rights team has done on bullying. And I would be, I would love to have some feedback about what, the work that they've done there and just, you know, what people are hearing as a result of that, that students are more aware of what bullying actually is and what they can do in response. So I wanted to applaud the civil rights team at the Wagner School.
Thank you.
Mrs. Seer, did we send out, and I should have, I was, I heard something else there. Did we send out the clip that WAAVI did on your children today?
Yes.
Because that also brought in the theme of bullying. Nate?
That was when I posted on the district.
Yeah. It was on Facebook. I saw.
Okay, yeah, so if you haven't seen that, Mary Ann, you might want to look at that because that also brought into the theme of bullying relationships and so on and so forth with the children at Weatherby today. What was the name of the program?
Girls on Run.
Thank you.
It's on NBC.
Or Walk Run.
Thank you.
Walk Run. I have one question and it's for future dates, but Jen, because I'm a parent at Weatherby, I've heard some really positive feedback about the cohort that you have going through the accelerated learning in math. And I'd love to hear more about that and maybe thoughts on how we can expand some accelerated learning opportunities in elementary school, how the board can support that and maybe integrate, what's the plan to integrate the new math coach? What's the vision? So future meeting, but something I'd love to learn more about.
So, no.
I don't think many of us knew about it. All right, anything else?
Question, there may not be an answer to it. What are the trends like now? You mentioned about special ed, we weren't able to build some ed tech positions. Why do you not hire in, in public education? What are the hiring trends looking like for filling teaching spots and ed tech spots?
I'll just generalize and then I'll let the principal speak to you what you see specifically. I will say that our applicant pools are absolutely lower than we've seen in the past five years. We are seeing pools as low as one applicant. We are challenged significantly for specialty areas. I'm sure Bill can speak to that. And the other thing I would say to you is that some of our positions that are non-teaching, that are jobs that we have typically thought that people who might either be stay-at-home parents or folks who are interested in a part-time job because they'd like to spend summers with their children, for instance, it's not necessarily the draw anymore because people are having to work year-round and want a job that can establish that for them. So I think we're running into some societal shifts that are affecting employment choices. But I'll open it up so that you can answer those questions.
So we just, as you saw, we nominated our English Social Studies person tonight and it was, that was our best pool so far, fifteen-plus applicants, which was really good. But our other two, which are much more specific in health FCS and the science engineering, engineering technology, they're just extremely low. What we're finding is a lot of people apply with great intentions but don't have the certification. So, and some of those are simple issues and some of them are, would be year-long commitments to getting them there. And that's what I've seen in this year especially.
I would say, Lesher, if you look at over five and 10 years, it's drastically changed with the sense of shallowness as compared to five years and 10 years ago. Special education, educational technicians, for example, we employ around seventy-five or eighty. It's very difficult to get a person who's certified in credential. But overall, it's a different scope than it was five years ago and certainly 10 years ago.
I'm guessing this trend is statewide?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. I think maybe to some degree that might go back to Governor Mills, a proponent of increasing the base salary for teachers to forty-eight thousand to try to incentivize people to commit to the teacher profession. But I think, in my opinion, I think it's larger than that, though.
We're seeing the same thing in higher ed.
Yes.
It's every industry.
Yes.
There are more jobs than people.
No, I was going to, Mrs. Seer just had a comment. You want to, go ahead.
Well, I just said, is there a, does the state have a process whereby you can request a waiver for someone who has the skills, the ability, but not the certification?
Yes, you can get a provisional, you can get a conditional, you can get a transitional, you can get an affidavit. However, that being said, they're more and more difficult to reach and get them today as it was five years ago.
Right. That is a new shift that we're needing to make. The ability for us to give conditional certification in the same way is new going into next year.
I would just also offer the competition for those positions because the candidate pool isn't as deep. It's so important that we can act quickly to secure candidates. And so, for example, I'm in interview season now, as many of the schools are, but our next board meeting isn't until July 10th and that gives some candidates trepidation about resigning from their other position until they've secured this contract. And so I wonder, you know, if there would be a provision allowed to the superintendent, both to offer a contract with your blessing because I think that that could help us so candidates don't slip away. Because I believe that that's happened to us before Bill did that happen last summer. And so, you know, it's, we really want to produce the best employees possible, but if we don't act quickly, we lose.
That's good to know.
I'm actually going to follow up on that with the Policy Committee to bring a policy to address what Jen is saying. And that being said, though, you still have to make sure you comply with the law. That still has to go to the board. The superintendent, that's not, it's not giving you authority to hire, but certainly can raise a candidate in a wholly manner than come to the board. Also, Lesher, I'd also plan, probably prejudicially, that there's a very significant shortage of administrators. Very. Matter of fact, I would claim that to be in a crisis today. That's a major problem. Not that the others are a major problem, but I know statewide, there's a number of principalships, assistant superintendents, superintends abundantly.
Speaking of that, is the principalship at Wagner posted?
Yes, it is.
And do we have any board representation yet on the committee?
Not yet.
I'm sorry. That's right, Don. Don, you're moving the, I can't keep track of you, John.
No, to answer your question, we're going to look at that after Tuesday when the Bicep Val is, that's going to put it for the background of the Monday Daily.
You're still employed.
Yeah. We will be, we'll be addressing that next week, yes. It is posted.
Okay. Are we good? Finance, Finance Committee, let's go to committee reports.
All right. We just met briefly last month. We basically just went over our budget articles that we went over here tonight, but more in-depth. And we went over our revenue reports. We talked about the capital reserve funds that we have, that we'll talk about more tomorrow night, but the software reserve fund, capital reserve fund, and athletic facility reserve fund. And that basically wrapped up our meeting. It was a short meeting, but important one that we have monthly to go over our reports.
Great. Questions? Rob, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Show up tomorrow night. We had our final meeting last night. I think it was actually an hour and a half and we're going to, we had quite a few interactive questions. I think unless that's repeated, we should be in an hour, hour and fifteen to get through the presentation that seems to flow pretty well for those that are following along and warrant articles and it's over before you know it and then the vote happens, so.
Just like that. All right, Athletic Committee.
How we did meet.
Building Committee?
Yep, we had a meeting. We talked about the replacing the valves here at Hampden Academy, part of the heating system. That'll be going on this summer. We've had leaks in the past and we're trying to be preemptive to replace some valves that stop the leaks. We discussed the capital projects, which I think Regan discussed earlier. We came up with a capital projects list for the next budget cycle and discussed the van fleet, which is, we're buying a used van, which I think we've already purchased because I signed a warrant with them. But we're also looking to purchase a new van at some point and perhaps moving to newer vans. We haven't made that decision yet, but at least having one new van. And we, also the energy usage, there was, I can't remember the name of the company, but there was a company that contacted Regan about wanting to consult us on our energy use. And I think at the prior meeting, we had a discussion about how electrical costs in the district are quite high and they're based on the fact that we cross these arbitrary peaks that the power companies put on you. And when you cross that peak, you pay a much higher rate for the rest of the billing cycle, not just for while you're over the peak. And so they may be able to help us come up with a strategy to lower our energy costs. That's the hope.
Thank you. Education.
Yep, we met right before this meeting and it was a great meeting with a number of members from the public attending, so that's always welcome, someone still here. So we had a nice presentation from Ms. O'Brien, the guidance counselor at Weatherby regarding the introduction of the Childhood Sexual Abuse Prevention and Response Law. It's a state law requiring that school districts have a policy in place for some childhood, child sexual abuse prevention and response education. There are really kind of four points that are incorporated into the requirements for this law, most of which we are already touching upon in our curriculum. However, they are, they've looked at various curriculums and how we're going to integrate that into ours. By the end of this school year, we need to have a policy about this law in place. So this is going to the Policy Committee next week. And then by the end of next year, we have to have the curriculum sorted out. So Ms. O'Brien did a great job and we will be getting information out of the parents about this as well, the specifics. On the kind of similar presentation, kind of part of the presentation was we are revamping the puberty education for the fifth grade. Currently, puberty education, or previously puberty education was probably similar to what it was like when we were in school. Boys and girls were separate. It was one hour, it was at the end of fifth grade and it was a big to-do. So in effort to make this So in effort to make this more inclusive, more normalizing, using more scientific language, this is going to be part of a year-long curriculum, integrated into health class, science class, guidance class, provide, education provided by classroom teacher, nurse, and guidance counselor. And people are gonna, it's gonna be more inclusive that, that the boys and girls aren't gonna be separated. It's going to, everyone's gonna learn about the scientific terminology and it's important to learn about how bodies work and appropriate boundaries and everything that goes along with that. Again, we, one of the things we had talked about is how this curriculum is going to be spread out throughout the year and also adding some helpful information for parents. So that parents will use similar language and similar model of talking to their kids. The other, same, we talked about an update on our digital literacy policy, which had last been updated in nineteen eighty-five. Yeah. So a bit has changed on digital literacy since nineteen eighty-five. And very similar, one of the things that we're integrating into hopefully the curriculum is digital citizenship. So it's not just about putting technology in the hands of these kids, but showing them appropriate boundaries and how to use this technology appropriately. Talking about digital footprints, like once it's online, it's kind of there forever. So that also will be going to the policy committee next week. The last thing we talked about was the diversity forum that's coming up on the twelfth at six P.M. Six P.M. at Reesbrook. We hope that everyone can attend. You already have a little announcement about that. But we really look forward to the conversation that it, the community brings. And we just really appreciate that this was in response to concerns that were brought up by citizens and the district is responding and gathering information and we want to hear from our community members. And that's it?
That's it. Thank you so much. Thank you. Policy Committee, John, are you able to report out on anything, Joe's absence, or Mary Ann?
Or? I don't think there's a lot to add from minutes. No, is there anything that's on there? There should be presenting policy.
Can you be prepared to do that?
I'll be prepared to second.
Okay, great. UTC, Alan?
Yeah, a couple of things. We haven't met since our last meeting. And I don't think we will be till either very end of June or end of July because we have to wait for all of our sending units to do their budget validation process. We have a meeting where we sign all of those. A couple of years ago, we were the ones who hung it up, the ones that budgeted and we had to go back. It was an issue for them. And the other thing I wanted to ask, well, just mention, we usually have a board meeting for UTC.
Yes.
During the year. We haven't this year.
Didn't we do it in the fall?
No, we haven't. Not in this school year.
It's a good thing to do, I think, in the, in the early fall, the tour. I just, I don't know if that's convenient for them.
I don't think it is.
I'll contact them.
Or actually, I think we wait till our new board members join us in December.
Okay.
Okay, great. Behavioral review?
So, behavioral review had its dropout prevention subcommittee meeting on the twenty-third. And we had presentations brief and we will be inviting back Kai Riz, Kai Kiseak and Ken Wood, who talked briefly about the alternative education program. And Anne Cowan, who talked about jobs for many graduates. And we had a wonderful presentation to the board also from her on those. They're both wonderful programs that are already in place to assist with the issues related to dropout prevention. So I'm looking forward to having them back and getting a more in-depth understanding about how students are referred and the program that they offer. I was particularly excited to find out that the alternative ed program is based on the work of William Glasser. I had to go back and look and remind myself about Glasser's work. That was really exciting because it uses natural consequences instead of punishment to help the children learn. And so then we looked at state statute and some of the data summaries that Cindy Carlisle had provided to us. We broke out into little groups. We didn't have enough time to come back and process. But you have a couple handouts from two of the groups on what came out of that, looking at what state statutes is saying, what questions arise, so that we can then move forward. We talked about community members. We need a community member and another student member. So we left there just everyone agreeing to talk with their resources within the community about finding those people. We have some names already, ready to present. And the next meeting will be August twenty-second at three o'clock. We're gonna be doing some deep data diving with Cindy. We're gonna look at those reports and, and address the questions and some of the thoughts that came up around each of those areas. So the areas we're looking at are attendance, but in particular, the chronic absenteeism, truancy, suspensions, behavioral suspensions. And what am I missing? Blame. So that's where we are. I, I was in one group, so I didn't get to attend the other groups. But in leaving, I was hearing conversations being taken outside of the meeting. People were just energized and talking about the possibilities. One of the things, Alan could speak to this, that I heard he and Barbara talking about were, and Anne also brought up the idea of expanding jobs for main graduates into lower grades, looking at CTE, getting into lower grades. So there's some already ideas that are starting to percolate in the groups. So I think it'll be exciting.
Thank you, Mary Ann. First board?
We haven't met.
Community relation cluster?
We did not meet last month.
We'll go right into policy considerations. I'm gonna hand it over to John as the first.
Experience.
Answering chair.
Experience.
Uh, let's see. The first one is the second meeting adoption of policy JL CDA American Marijuana Schools. There weren't any changes, however, there was one word in vision. And for the life of me, I cannot remember what that one word was within policy.
Since you brought it forward.
Designated caregiver? Was that what it, no?
No, we don't already.
We already done that one? Okay.
It was something simple. It was either grammatical or...
Yeah, correct. It didn't change.
We've discussed it extensively. I can assure you of that.
I don't know if I can find it, but... So, but there were no, there were no major changes from the first reading. So I move for approval of second reading and adoption of policy JL CDA.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you. There are many people on this policy. It's still, my parents and others put a lot of time in getting this together.
Uh, let's see. The next one is JK, student discipline. There were no changes on this from the first reading.
That's correct.
So I would move for adoption and approval of second reading of policy JK.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Uh, the next one is policy DJC. This came to us from the Finance Committee, I believe. There was a revision for one word change on the last sentence. Changing from the word item to line. And that was it. So I move for first, approve of first reading.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you.
And the last one is policy J E C C, sign of students.
Based on policy.
Correct.
You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
That's what I was.
Yes, we can't stop in the...
Right.
That's right.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, any other questions? I'm sorry, we haven't voted on them yet. All right, all those in favor of first reading? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That was quick.
Yeah.
Good job, John. All right, we're gonna go right into new business and we want to discuss an act on school breakfast and lunch price increase for next school year.
Yes, you have an exhibit given to it by Kathy. Kathy, do you want to introduce this or make any appropriate comments to supplement to your exhibit?
Sure. We didn't increase prices last year. And so I'm just proposing, based on, every year I have to do a calculation through the state and they, it recommends where we should, what we should do for any price increase, just on the paid lunches or breakfasts. And the recommendation on that calculation was around twenty cents. I'm recommending fifteen for the lunch price, just to kind of keep up with our, our costs. And since we didn't increase last year, just wanna continue to try to keep our budget on track so we hopefully don't have to ask for any additional funding.
Just to follow up the last comment, Kathy, we need to remind board members, we currently do not have any money from the district budget to support the program. And I still contend that's very rare, having self, selling program. So in summary, we're looking to recommend, endorse the recommendation, increase the lunch prices to elementary at two fifty-five, middle two seventy-five, high school two ninety-five, and breakfast in all schools at one fifty-five.
So it's a fifteen cent increase for lunch, five percent, five cents, five cents.
Five cents for breakfast.
Yep, right. Were there any questions about that?
Revenue compared to prior years, is it pretty parallel or have we seen an increase in more purchase?
It's about the same in last year, yeah.
Okay, so I'd be looking for my advocacy to endorse the prices as noted in your exhibit.
Any questions?
I just wanna say, we have an awesome, awesome program. We just did a field trip with the fifth grade and we were able to source all the food from, from the school district. So the teachers didn't have to shop, the parents didn't have to shop. All of the allergies and the food sensitivities, everything was, was taken care of. And that's just, it was awesome. Thank you.
You did a great job. Any other questions? All those in favor? We'll go on to discuss an act on probationary teachers.
Yeah, so this is that time of the year. So your first exhibit is probationary teachers, year one to year two. The second exhibit is year two to year three. And the third exhibit is year three to continuing contract. And I want to accentuate the last one because that's a big move in the teaching profession. The teaching profession in Maine has a three-year probationary status. And when you move to continuing contract, by definition, that's a two-year contract. All these people have been evaluated appropriately by the building administrator or director, recommended to me. So at this time, I would ask for your endorsement of the three exhibits as noted from the first year to second, second to third, and third year to continuing contract status.
And I'd like to ask that we separate these out because we do have a conflict of interest.
Okay. So first year to second year, please.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Thank you. Second year to third year.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
And the last group?
Upstate, we have an extension.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rob?
Yeah.
Okay, Rob, okay. And third year to continuing contract.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? And we have an extension. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Discuss an act on the Chromebook, please.
You wanna do that, Rachel, or Nate? Nate, do you want to introduce this?
I would like to refresh the fleet of Chromebooks within the district for the high school and sixth grade and take those current sixth grade devices and push them down to our elementary schools and hopefully increase the amount of technology we're putting there too. Though we will be taking some of those out and replacing them, just like the high school.
Okay, so you can see the motion at the top is, I move to the resolution entitled resolution to authorize lease purchase of technology equipment in principal amount of two hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars be adopted in form presented to the meeting and that's spelled out. And we'll attach this to the minutes of the meeting.
So Rick just made the motion, but he can't, so...
That's correct. Very good.
I'll make it.
Go ahead.
I move that the resolution entitled, resolution to authorize lease purchase of technology equipment in the principal amount of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars be adopted in form presented to this meeting.
Right.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board?
We budgeted that last year or we're budgeting it forward?
Budgeting forward.
We're budgeting it forward, but we've had a lease in the past, so it's just...
Right.
It's there.
It's a rolling, yeah.
Any other questions?
Regan, explain how this differs from our capital, or technology capital reserve.
Sure. So we are going to be making a recommendation tomorrow night that we have a new reserve fund established called a technology reserve fund. But that will be a request for fifty thousand dollars being dedicated for...
At this time, we'll move forward on the agenda to discuss an act on the superintendent of school. And I'm excited about this part. I've been excited about all the parts, but this one, I think. All right. In anticipation of Superintendent Lyons' retirement, over the past three years, the board has engaged in succession planning as outlined in our strategic plan. It was essential for the health and the future of RSU twenty-two that we find a leader who demonstrates strength, loyalty, compassion, innovation, and a collaborative spirit while leading with the utmost integrity. Regan Nichols exemplifies these qualities each and every day. And her long tenure of fourteen years with RSU twenty-two provides an invaluable understanding of our district's culture and values. So it is, it is with extreme pleasure that I ask us all to consider moving forward and confirming Regan as our next superintendent of schools for RSU twenty-two. We have a five-year contract negotiated with an annual salary of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And so with this, I'd like to invite John to make the formal motion.
Pursuant to twenty-dash A M R S A subsection one zero five one two, I move that the board vote to elect Regan Nichols for superintendent of Maine School Administrative District twenty-two effective July first, two thousand twenty, and to authorize the board chair to execute a suitable employment agreement with Regan Nichols consistent with the terms discussed in executive session.
I second that.
Second. I'd love to open it up for any questions, comments. All those in favor? Congratulations, Regan. Do you have anything that you'd like to share?
Sure. First of all, I just wanna let you know that I am humbled by your consideration and your confidence in how I can move forward with our district. And I can't thank you enough for the past two years, the support that I've received in coming into this position and making some big transitions around that has just been fantastic. It's truly been a gift to be able to come to the central office and mentor under Superintendent Lyons, work with all of you, and have the support of not only the administrative team that we have, which is absolutely dynamite, you know that, but also all of the staff and faculty that I've come to know over the years, whether I worked with them in our schools or I've come to know them through this role. So I truly thank you for moving my name forward tonight. One thing that is unique about RSU twenty-two is that the superintendency in our district has been so long-lived with each of the services. So I think there have been five superintendents?
In our district?
Yeah.
Been three.
Three.
Three in fifty, in fifty years, it's been three.
So to have this honor, really, bestowed to me is something that is not lost on me and it's a huge responsibility. And I look forward to moving on that journey and I really am excited to do so. am excited to do so. But we have an entire year to get things underway and plan, so thank you all.
Karen, I have a couple of comments though. First of all, I want to congratulate the board because I can tell you, and I've shared with you, and I, you're probably sick and tired of hearing this, but I can share you, with you some pretty significant stories statewide about the superintendency. There, and I'm looking at Jane, her daughter was in a town, just went, experienced this where they could not find a superintendent in Scarborough, Maine, and they ended up hiring in for a year. So you need to be congratulated for putting this as a priority the last few months and reaching the decision you made tonight. So I don't think that, I think the public needs to be aware that this is taken very seriously and now you've positioned yourself very well. For the public, I think it's important to note, over 51 years, let me share two names with you. One of them is Dr. John Skiin, Skiin Center, was your superintendent 1968 to 1982, so 14 years. From 82 to 92, this gentleman named Carlton Byrnes, he came down from the county.
Dubois.
Dubois, Byrnes is close. Carlton Byrnes was up in the water spring. Carlton Dubois, thank you.
I worked into those two.
Carlton Dubois, 82 to 92, and since 92, I've been here. If you haven't heard, I was walking across the football field yesterday from Hamilton Academy having lunch and I heard that Brewer's superintendent resigned this past weekend. And my calculation is since I've been here, since I've been here, not to pick on Brewer, but since I've been here, Brewer's had seven superintendents. So think about it, folks. You are in a district, 51 years has had three superintendent schools. That's incredible. And you heard that somewhat from our people tonight with respect to dedication and longevity. Stability is key, in my opinion. And in my opinion, to be pompous about it, it's very key in the position that I sit in. So congratulations to you folks for bringing you where you are tonight and then over the next few months, we'll obviously be looking at the task of filling Regan's position so that we are well poised coming in calendar year 2020 that you are ready to go come July 1st, 2020.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
And thank you for helping us.
You're welcome.
So...
So, you have an executive session?
We do, but do we have any meeting dates that we need to set?
End committee before the board meeting in July.
What's that?
End committee before the board meeting in July.
Okay.
Particularly note, again, to amplify your, hopefully your attendance on the diversity forum on the 12th at 6:00 p.m., please try to attend that because I think you are going to be very impressed with the agenda that night.
I do want to let you all know that the administrative team is here, communication will be sent out to all district staff this evening announcing Regan's confirmation and then I'll ask in the morning, after staff have an opportunity to check their email, that we post the communication that Nate's going to send you on our Facebook pages and will be notified in the local media as well. But I want to make sure our staff are notified first.
Amanda? Are we on calendar still?
I'm sorry, I just backed that team. We're going forward again.
That's all right. Is there any need for community relations to me? I don't have any items, but I wonder if we should set an agenda for the next few months?
We probably should set an agenda, one and two, talk about your right one spot left. He had left a void with the Facebook and so maybe we just want to touch base with him.
All right, sounds good. Get together email.
And make sure Nate's included.
Okay, so we've got education committee already set, right?
Yeah.
Community relations, you're gonna communicate and set a date and Mary Ann?
Behavioral review will be meeting on the 27th at 1:30.
Any other committees that need to schedule a meeting?
Do you want to set that now or do you want to send?
Yes, we have to set a full board meeting for the superintendent, so we can do that now.
Is that an executive session or is that reminding?
Yeah, it will be.
Can we do it after July 10th meeting?
Normally what we do is you have the ad hoc committee meet with me and then we discuss it, then we come to the board, if you want to do it that way.
But we can still meet prior to that.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
If that's acceptable to me after.
That's fine.
That's fine with me.
Yep.
Get an whole board together.
Do it once, one night is perfect.
Yeah, we'll do executive session on the 10th.
And then we'll meet before the meeting? We can't do that.
Do you, do you have any preferences?
So in other words, we're saying, are we saying the ad hoc committee will meet with me before?
Before.
Before that, sometime between tonight and that.
The ad hoc board self-evaluation committee is meeting on, when did we say, Mary Ann? On the 13th at 5:00 p.m. I really just, could you assist us in getting it through?
Does the ad hoc committee of what?
Ad hoc board self-evaluation committee in June 13th at 5:00 p.m.
At 5:00 p.m., okay. I don't try to extend that. Okay. And one more, and one more time, the ad hoc committee, do you want, do we want to set a time right now?
Uh, we can.
Okay. So you want to do it like 6 o'clock on the 10th, on the 10th of July?
The only problem with that is Amanda and I are on the education committee.
Okay, all right, so whatever, whatever date.
What, you want some time?
Yeah.
To process that before executive session on the 10th?
Yes.
So you want to meet before July 10th?
Yeah, okay. Do you guys have any time every day that you can?
Um, yes.
Just give, give me what works with you folks. How about the eights or the nines?
Like July?
Yep.
Yep, I can do something.
Okay, yep.
What time's best for you?
They're open right now, so get it while you can.
What do you think, morning, afternoon? Okay.
Retirement.
You should have spoken, you should have spoken up, Jane.
We've been up for five hours already. It's like the middle of the day.
Eight o'clock ad hoc, superintendent's office.
On the two, on Tuesdays.
Tuesday, the...
The night.
Tuesday.
At superintendent's office, ad hoc, eight o'clock on the night. Okay? Very good.
We good?
Very good.
I need a motion.
Motion, executive session, that we enter executive session, discuss superintendent schools according at 1 M R S A subsection 4056A.
Okay, second. Thank you, John. All those in favor?